Good evening. Welcome to the recessed regular meeting of the Pascagoula City Council. Today is May 6, 2025, and the time is now 6:00 p.m. Thank you for those who are attendants in the council chambers here at City Hall, as well as those viewing online. We're happy to have you join us. Tonight, the invocation will be given by Supervisor Enid Morris, and Councilman Blythe will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Senator Robert Morris?
Good evening, everyone. Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, thank you for waking us up to see a new day, and with good mind, health and strength, and a sound mind. Thank you for many blessings to give us daily. I pray you give us guidance to this board, make the best decision for the citizens of Pascagoula. Thank you. In Jesus' name, amen.
Join me in the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, the free and just states, one nation, under God, in the name of this world, with the freedom of choice and power.
You have before you the agenda for tonight's meeting. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
Yes, we're going to have one amendment to remove, item 9A, under City Manager. This was the PRA selection with Mayor Willis and Councilman Parker out. We have decided to move that to the May 20 meeting.
Anything else? All right. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Second.
All right, motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have Address the Council section. The one item tonight is a presentation by Columbo Harvey and Associates regarding the 2023 audit presentation.
You can come on. We have Ms. Scarborough from Columbo Harvey and Associates with the results from our 2023 audit.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Nung Scarborough. I'm here to present the September 30th, 2023 audit report. You guys have a copy in front of you, a very detailed copy. So I'm going to go over a summary of the audit report. And if you have any questions at all, just email me or give me a call at the firm. And Justin should have my contact info. The audit report, y'all receive an unmodified opinion, which means that there are no material weaknesses and no significant deficiencies in the financial statements and no non-compliance, material non-compliance found. The net position did increase by $3.951 million in 2023 compared to 2022. General revenues decreased in 2023, mostly due to a decrease in grants received in fiscal year 2023. But property taxes did go up to $13.244 million. General sales tax went up a little bit to $6.4 million. Expenditures did increase by $6.2 million in '23 compared to '22. This is due to an increase in capital projects. Capital assets net of accumulated depreciation is $118 million, which is an increase of about $7 million compared to prior year. Outstanding debt did decrease to $38 million. This is a summary of the financial statements. The net pension liability, the retirement fund, is a cost-sharing plan. So the city is responsible for an estimated $34 million or $35 million in fiscal year '23. So most of the total liabilities of $88 million is consisted of the net pension liability for Pierce and Mississippi Retirement System. There was a limited obligation bond issued in 2023 for $696,000. The water and sewer funds' total revenues was $12.9 million. Total expenses, $11.3 million. Operating income, $1.6 million. This did decrease by about $500,000 compared to 2022. So besides the pension, there's governmental debt and business-type debt, which totaled $38 million. The city paid off $2.7 million in debt towards principal. And of course, there's the new debt limited obligation tax bond, and then equipment installment loans for $670,000, and the bond is $696,000. There's some cash information. In the bank, there was $52 million in fiscal year '23. Part of that is restricted towards certain things like customer deposits for the water and utility funds of $783,000. Some of it was restricted for debt payments, which is $3.8 million. And then some is also restricted for capital projects. It's $28.6 million. The total cash in both funds is $32.7 million. For proprietary and then self-insurance fund is $264,000. I do want to say that as of now, there is no more deficit in the general fund, which is great. For fiscal year '23, the city did bring it from $3 million to $934,000 for the deficit. But of course, it's gone now as of today. And then construction in progress expended to date is $4.8 million. There's still $4 million remaining at the end of the year. But I do want to say that in fiscal year '23, $8.7 million was spent on construction in progress, and $11.4 million was reclassed to depreciate as part of capital assets, which means those projects are completed. For federal awards, the city did expend more than $750,000 in federal expenditures. So we had to do a single audit. We did an audit on the CDBG, which is the Community Development Block Grant and the Highway Planning and Construction Grant. There were no issues of non-compliance found. In '23, there were no new federal grants awarded, which part of that is why the revenue went down in 2023. It was an unmodified report issued for federal awards, which means no material misstatement and no significant deficiencies. And that's the end of the summary. And then if y'all decide to look over the report and have questions, of course, just give me a call. Okay?
Thank you.
You have.
Do we have a motion to accept the 2023 audit report is presented?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Which is why I thank you very much for all the work that went into it. I'm sure, Charlene, you were involved there. So thank you both very much. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have a proclamation proclaiming May 17 through the 25th of 2025 as National Safe Voting Week. Charlene?
Do you want me up front? We have the proclamation, and then we have the picture, and then I think Mike has a few words to say about voting safety. Whereas for over 100 billion Americans, voting continues to be a popular recreation activity from coast to coast. People are taken to the water and enjoying time together, voting, sailing, paddling, fishing. During National Safe Voting Week, the U.S. Coast Guard and state local safe voting partners encourage voters to explore and enjoy America's beautiful waters responsibly. And whereas safe voting begins with appropriate preparation, U.S. Coast Guard investigations confirm human error accounts for the majority of voting accidents annually, and the use of life jackets could present nearly 86% of recreational voting fatalities. Through the adoption of basic voting safety procedures, such as carrying emergency distress and communication equipment, wearing proper life jackets, participating in voting safety courses, subscribing to annual vessel safety checks, and avoiding alcohol while at the helm, recreational voters can ensure their safety on America's coastal and natural waters. And whereas National Safe Voting Week is observed to reinforce awareness of and attention to other important life-saving practices so recreational voters can enjoy the safe, on-the-water experiences throughout the year. And whereas the vast majority of voting accidents are caused by human error or judgment and a lack of awareness of recreational voting safety recommendations. And whereas our local U.S. Coast Guard Auxiliary Fort Sillaw promotes and proactively supports all aspects of the United States Coast Guard Recreation and Voting Safety Program. Now therefore, Jay Willis, Mayor of the City of Pascagoula, does hereby proclaim Saturday, May 17 through Sunday, May 25, 2025, as National Safe Voting Week throughout the flagship city of Pascagoula, and encourage all individuals to participate in voting activities in our district municipality to also observe this occasion while learning more about the safe voting practices and by taking advantage of voting safety education opportunities throughout the year.
Any more to the picture? Do this?
Perfect.
And then he's got a few words he wants to say.
I just have a few things. Mostly, thank you to the city council. My name is Mike Leonard. I'm a member of the U.S. Coast Guard Auxiliary here in Pascagoula. And we're a volunteer service with U.S. Coast Guard. And our auxiliary members, we all have the active duty. And we do this through three primary missions. Number one is to promote recreational boat safety. We do this by offering boat safety courses, which assist boat owners to achieve their boat safety certificates, as well as we do free vessel aid studies. We're going to do it this May 25th here at Point Park, from 7:00 in the morning till nobody wants to see us. Then on the 26th, we're going to be at Mary Walker, and we provide that. We did a decal. That helps in the assistance of law enforcement that at least you can take the initiative to go through boat safety training as well as having your vessel in compliance with the U.S. So with the U.S. Coast Guard and the Recreational Boat Safety Council, I thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Good job, Terry. Next, we have the public comment section. I believe we have two people signed up to speak tonight. We're pleased to provide an opportunity at each meeting for comments by citizens, limited to three minutes of speaking time per speaker, and no more than a total of 30 minutes. The public comment section of the agenda is not a question-and-answer session. The mayor, council, and other administrative officials will take all comments under advisement and may respond or take other potential action at a later time if warranted. First up, we have Sammy Wells. If you'll come up. Just introduce yourself and let us know what you're talking about.
My name is Sammy Wells. I live at 3824 Pascagoula Street. I don't know if y'all are familiar with that location, but it's the yellow house right beside the Ice House property. So you probably know why I'm here. We've been inundated with water since they brought this 10,000 yards of dirt into the Ice House property. I've talked to Mr. Blythe and Mr. Larson about it. I've talked to Mr. Church about it. And since they put up this barrier that they put along the street behind my property, it's gotten worse. So you can see all the dirt that's washed into the street. That that barrier is not doing very much good. But since they moved this dirt in, we've had nothing but problems. It's washed, turned red mud into my yard. I bought mulch to put into it to cover it up. It washes the mulch off. I just recently bought pine straw. But you know, something's got to be done about this water. You know, it's just everything they do makes it worse. They've done elevation readings. They know which way the water's flowing. You know, you don't have to be a genius to go look at it, figure out where it's going. It's going right across my property, and it's getting kind of old. But even before that, when they were demolishing the property, and they were dropping the wrecking ball, my house had moved to its current location in 1940 from Lake Avenue. It was 1,500 feet when I bought it. It's 2,800 square feet now. You know, I've lived in it a good while and put a lot of money into it. And once they started this demolition with the wrecking ball, my house was on piers. Every time they dropped the ball, it shakes my house. I've had tiles cracked in my house. I got crown molding coming loose. My granite backsplash has come loose from the wall. After around '96, '97, I had the house leveled when I was remodeling. I've remodeled the house two times. I had it leveled by Harper at the time. He was still in business. I'm in the process of having it looked at now, because the middle of my house is sinking. I got a major problem with it. So I don't know if it's from this demolition, whenever the house was shaken, if it was causing my house to sink. But I got a guy coming to look at it to see. But my main problem right now is this water. You know, something's got to be done about it. Yeah. I brought you a book. That y'all can pass this around. I've got pictures of before the barrier and after the barrier. And you can see it's a major problem. We don't want to stop the development of the property, because God knows we need something in Pascagoula to lower these property insurance rates and tax rates. Something's got to be done. But you know, at the time, we had the rezoning meeting before this ever started. I was at the rezoning meeting. And I spoke at that, and I asked, was this going to devalue our property? And was assured it wouldn't. I said, because if it is, I'm willing to sell. Y'all can buy me out now. And I was told at the time it wasn't economically feasible to buy my property, which that squares up the entire Ice House property. So I've never talked to the developers. You know, every time they come out there, if you go try to talk to them, they run. So they're not interested in fixing these problems. But something's got to be done. You know, I'm sick and tired of it.
Well, thank you very much for coming tonight.
Y'all can keep that and pass it around. We'll just come pick it up later.
Sir, you have a legitimate complaint. I went out there, and I went out there again this morning and looked from the backside. Mr. Larson, for two days now, we have been trying to get hold of our contact, to get to the developer, which we've gotten no response. So we got to go a different direction to try to get in touch with these people.
My understanding, they're on their third realtor. They've happened to locate people for the property. And I don't know what the problem is. I keep getting rid of the people that's handling the property for them. But I do know the developer's out of Louisiana. And I've tried to get the name of the owner to get with him about doing something. I hadn't been able to find anybody. And I know y'all have been working on it.
We're going to continue to try to make contact. We're going to try to find some different avenues to get a hold of them, because this truly needs to be addressed. You have a valid complaint.
Okay. Well, I appreciate anything y'all can do, because I'm 79 years old this year. My wife will be 80. And we can't get out there and keep having to repair all this every time we have a rain. And I know it's coming this week. We'll have it again. But you know, it's just getting sick. Something's got to be done.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Betty Mitchell.
Good afternoon. I'm Betty Mitchell. I reside at 3314 Baltimore Avenue, Pascagoula, Mississippi. I'm a retired public health nurse in Jackson County Health Department, Ocean Springs, Biloxi, and Bay St. Louis. I have a major problem in my neighborhood. People speed excessively. I have called the police department so many times until they know who's calling. And I, you know, walk in the neighborhood in the evening. I've taken my grandchildren walking in the neighborhood, pulled them in the wagon, and we've almost gotten run over several times. I have contacted police officers. I've even had police officers to sit in my driveway to try to catch these speeders. I've had the people that have been speeding down there to curse me with the most profane language that you ever want to hear, have threatened me, have thrown debris in my yard. And I am a stickler for maintaining my neighborhood, especially my house. Something needs to be done. I've tried to get speed bumps, and some of the officers have told me that it's a liability because the police officers on motorcycles can injure themselves if they come through. I'm saying, well, maybe they could yield before they get to the speed bumps. Prior to working inside my clinic, I had patients all over Jackson County. And they had speed bumps in those neighborhoods. So why can't I get one in Pascagoula, specifically on Baltimore Avenue? I also have a problem with two of my neighbors that have cars that aren't working. They haven't been moved. They have expired tags. I've seen rodents come from under the cars. Something needs to be done about that. If they're not movable, then they need to be discarded. And I've talked to the neighbors about that. Also, a couple of neighbors haven't been mowing their grass like they should. That's a bone of contention with me. And some of them keep their garbage cans out every single day. Instead of, and I've stopped and talked to them. I'm really somewhat of a neighborhood nuisance, but I've resided in my neighborhood for 38 years, and I'm not going anywhere. I'm really not. So if you would take this into consideration, my main thing is I need some speed bumps, because I'm about to become a great-grandmother. And I'm going to pull those grandchildren in that same wagon that I pulled my grandkids in. Thank you for your consideration.
Ma'am?
You're not a nuisance. We need people like you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Can we follow Ms. Betty? Get at least the, try and get the addresses for the cars where the cars are broken down? And we can start there, and we can see what we can get done as well.
Ma'am, I'm a retired police officer with Pascagoula. The stance back then, when I hired on, and I was there for 29 years, and the reason for the speed bumps, it wasn't because of the police officer and the motorcycles. What it was, it was liability, because people were tearing their cars up and then suing the city. I don't know your stance on it now, Chief.
They don't meet the rules yet. I know in some states you go, like when I was in Houston, just about every neighborhood had them. But every state has different rules, and I don't think it applies for us now. We had a hard time getting one in for the crossing for the kids on Tucker and then the beach, but it met different statutes and standards that allowed us. And I know you, and I know you're a sweetheart.
Yes, thank you.
But we put our cameras out there and done a speed study. And I promise you, dear, I'm not making a lie to you, but the speed problem there compared to where I put my cameras everywhere else was just a very minimal. And you do have some speeders, but it's not to the point where it would justify speed bumps or we could come try to catch them. But my point is, there's several other streets. The one that put me on Pascagoula Street, I mean, it was easily 10 times worse. Okay? And the problem is, we're going to have speeders everywhere. And there's thousands and thousands of tickets written a year here. There's probably, let's see, five, there's over 5,000 plus, and he can attest to that, just in the traffic position. That's five guys. And then you have 40-something more sworn officers that draw tickets out there. So there's a lot of long course of action taken on speeding, red lights, stop signs, and what have you. Setting a motorcycle officer down there all day long is tough. You had two guys today, because one's in school, you had two working, and one supervisor, and that wrecks today. That takes a lot of time.
Yes, it does.
And I'm so sorry, darling.
Well, Chief, if you could...
We will try to come back down.
Yeah, if you could give her a little extra attention, we'd appreciate it. You know, we put the speed bump down in front of the beach park. I think it was a month later, a motorcyclist went through there. I think he's paralyzed.
Yeah, we had a lawsuit on that, but we got put a lawsuit.
Yeah, so I mean, that's just something you look at as a city when you start putting them out. I mean, we definitely want to protect you and your grandchildren and all that. But we also got to look out for the liability of the city. So if you could give her a little extra attention down there, Chief, we'd appreciate it.
May I say one other thing, too, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Last year, I had a guy that came through my neighborhood going so fast until he lost control of his car and hit my brick mailbox, and it crumbled in thousands of pieces. And he was just totally disoriented. Then he ran into another neighbor's yard. He did stop because of the impact, and it was horrible. I thought he had really hurt himself pretty bad. But he was an intrum hitting my grandson's car that was parked in my driveway. He was going just that fast. And his excuse was, he lived in Moss Point. His excuse was he was going to his sister's house, who lived on Chicago. Why did you come down to Baltimore? His child had been ill and in the emergency room, and he hadn't had his sleep in three days.
Well, I add one to that. At that speed, you hit a speed off, and might have lost it off of somebody's living room.
Yes. I thought the way it sounded, I mean, I could hear it in my kitchen. I was preparing dinner.
Yes, ma'am.
So Chief, it wouldn't help if we put like speed limit signs out there? Is there any way we can...
If signs worked, we'd be in...
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. 10 miles from us, they won't do anything. They'll still speed up. Yeah, so.
Is there certain times of the day that it's worse, that you notice that you...
We've done the speed study. We've had the times.
You did?
It's just a very minimal compared.
They know when you park there, or they know when that camera's there. They know.
It's a shortcut.
And they know I'm a pest, because I told them I'm going to, you know. I walk the street. I stand out there with my pad. I get, you know, I get nervous. And my sisters told me, you better stop, because you might get hurt.
The days of setting up radar in places, you don't see very much anymore, because we have this app called Road Block App. And anywhere we're longer than five minutes, we're on there. Got it, so. Sorry.
Is it something maybe we need to look at, at least put out? Because I hear a lot of talk about speed bumps. A lot of people request them. Is that something we might want to look at and just kind of get the...
Well, I think by statute, speed bumps are illegal. Speed lumps.
Yes.
The lumps is what we have on Tucker and the beach park. But I think you have to have so much foot traffic going across those, it's not going to make it. Walkways, it's a lump for a walkway, not just for speed.
Got you.
It's saving for the crossing of the streets.
If we do one...
It's a, yeah, it's a...
If we do one, we'll be doing one in every place in the city. And there's a lot of places that law enforcement and that fire truck has to get to very quickly. And if every neighborhood we go through has one, that might be a few moments to somebody's life hit the side.
I'm not looking to how to make it legal, but at least to put out the information so people know why we can.
Yeah, I agree with the can.
Yeah, but just that information, so if... Because I would have never thought about emergency services coming through a neighborhood not being a major issue. And that's a very good point. I would have never thought about that, so.
One other thing, too. Why is it that Moss Point, who's so close to us, has it in that area?
Yeah, Moss Point has radar cameras, too, sending tickets and mail.
How did they get approval, Chief? No, folks, no.
They ask for approval.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Bay. We'll be back with you. All right, next. Next, we have the consent agenda. Does any member of the council have any questions about the consent agenda? Do we have a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda? There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Item 9A has been taken off. So we'll go on to the next item on the city manager's agenda, which is 9B.
Yep. So we have two items under City Manager tonight. The first is a resolution approving bid for the Brookwood subdivision drainage improvements. The city received two bids for the Brookwood subdivision drainage improvement project. This project will focus on Sherwood and Greenwood Streets in Ward 2. The best and lowest bid was bottom-to-top construction at $463,223.72. We are very excited to get this project started for the citizens of Ward 2.
Absolutely. We appreciate it.
Did that company, has that company done work for us before?
Bottom-to-top's doing the Buynavista Drainage Improvement Project.
And I think they also did Foxwood, did they not?
Yes.
They did Northwood.
Northwood, sorry. Yes.
Do we have a motion to adopt a resolution approving bid for Brookwood subdivision drainage improvements?
Motion.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion passes.
The next item is a resolution approving bid for the East Pascagoula Police The next item is a resolution approving bid for the East Pascagoula Police Substation Phase One. The city received four bids for the East Pascagoula Substation Phase One project that will be located on the corner of O'Mobile and Chico Streets and Ward Three. The lowest and best bid was J.E. Tally Construction for $879,752. I think it's beyond to be said that the city is very happy to kick this project off. We'll start seeing, should start seeing work probably in the next month or so, once contracts are completed.
Amen.
People are looking forward to it.
Yeah, it's going to be great for the neighborhood, for the whole, for the area, East Pascagoula.
Thanks, chief.
Might be my new office.
That's right. No, you're going to have two of them. Two of them.
Do we have a motion to adopt a resolution approving bid for Phase One of the East Pascagoula Police Substation?
So move. Second.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? I do have one question. This is Phase One, could you kind of go over Phase One, Phase Two? Because I think there's a lot of interest on this topic.
So how a sequence in this project, basically Phase One is all the site work, so that'll be all the earthwork, the rest of the demo, and cleanup, and then the installation of the entirety of the K-9 drainage facility and the motorcycle drainage facility. Phase Two will be the actual building renovation.
Okay. For Phase One, you mentioned the demos at the building that we acquired, like on the southern.
Barb Street. We're keeping that building.
Oh, we're going to keep that building?
Oh, Barbshaw, right?
Excellent.
I think that's going to be part of the K-9.
It'll be storage and access for the K-9.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Any more discussion or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, James. Next, we have the city attorney's agenda items. Michael?
We've got two items. The first one is an ordinance amending the procedure for adjustments on swimming pools. When someone fills their swimming pool, they're allowed to, under certain circumstances, adjust off the sewer portion of their bill, because they're not putting flow through the sewer. And this was a request from the utility department to provide a little more flexibility, where instead of doing that adjustment once in a 12-month period, you would do it once in a calendar year. So if you fill your pool in June, and then it's next April, and you're ready to fill it again, you would be eligible for that adjustment, because it'd be a different calendar year.
Okay. Is that easier for tracking?
That was, I don't know if it's easier for tracking, but it was intended to be more customer-friendly.
Okay. All right. Do we have a motion to adopt an ordinance amending code of ordinances for swimming pool adjustments?
So move. Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion passes.
The second item is relates to the urban renewal plan for East Pascagoula. That plan was adopted at the last council meeting, and so the next step in that process is to authorize the PRA to carry out that plan for the O'Mobile and Chico corridor. So before you tonight, it's a resolution that will do that.
I know a question about that. O'Mobile-Chico, now, how far does it go? Does it go past, you know, does it go to the split where Archer and O'Mobile intersect and goes all the way out to Industrial Road?
It goes all the way from Market Street to, I think, the split.
Market Street, right? Market to Market.
She said it was, okay. I was wondering about that.
It ends somewhere in there, it doesn't go all the way to Industrial.
Right, right, okay. I was wondering about that, I got to ask the guy the last time, but okay.
I got a map, I can give you a copy of it.
Good.
Do we have a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing and empowering PRA authority to carry out East Pascagoula Urban Renewal Project and Urban Renewal Plan?
So move. Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? I think these two things with the, with this urban renewal project and with that police substation are really good for East Pascagoula, and I think it's an exciting time for this town.
Absolutely. Now, one thing I did wonder about, you know, I talked to, what was his name, the guy that was here? It doesn't matter. I was wondering about, you know, right in that area where Church on the Rock is, and those houses that go from, what, Boston, Baltimore, New York, and all of those locations right there. He said it would be like down the road whenever that's maybe addressed. So I was just wondering how long down the road? So when would they be back here?
I don't know. I think, I think that's all dependent on, just like the downtown, where the funding becomes available and people present plans to the PRA and seeing how that fits in. I guess, and the other thing to think about is that development on East Pascagoula is going to look different than what it, what does, you know, what you wanted for the downtown. So, and I think having the PRA and having their experience doing the downtown is going to really help us out as we figure out, or as the future councils figure out what that's going to look like on East Pascagoula.
Sounds good.
All right. Motion and a second, any further discussion? Or did we get a motion and a second already?
Yes.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Next is the docket of claims, are there any questions regarding the docket of claims? Do we have a motion to approve the docket of claims?
So move. Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion regarding the docket of claims? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have the mayor council items, are there any mayor council items this time?
I have something. I was, and I meant to ask you about this just another day. I was going down Tucker Street, the ball fields down there, and this may already be an address to you, I don't know. And we have the other fields that are fenced in, and then you have what you call the wee, no fences at all, which I think is kind of strange for safety reasons. I would think that that would be something we would need to look at to maybe fence in them two little fields. It just makes sense to me.
Yep. Parks and Rec has worked on a plan, actually has a design for it as well, that has that done, as well as a few other additions to that area in particular. But yeah, the fencing around the wee ball fields is part of that plan.
Okay.
It just hasn't been approved, that was very, that was like last week, that that was presented, so yeah, they're moving towards that.
One other thing, while I'm thinking about it, how difficult would it be to put the pickleball courts and get some lighting down there, because at night?
Under the bridge?
Yeah.
Yes, in the works. We ordered that probably two months ago. Mike would know. We checked back with Mississippi Power Friday, and they're just waiting on parts, but everything else is done. So yeah, that's been in the works for a while, so that all underneath the bridge will be lit.
Yeah, don't laugh at me, I started playing. It's actually. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Anyone else?
No more than the lighting on the high-rise. Why it seem to be a problem as of recent?
Lights out?
Yes. I mean, coming over the high-rise, just one section on the south side that was on the other night when I ran across, drove across.
I can check.
Southwest side.
We'll contact you too. Love it. They go out periodically, every now and then we get a batch out at a time, we love it.
Thank you, Scott. All right. Next is executive session, do we have a motion to go into closed session to determine if there's a need for executive session?
So move.
Second. All right. Motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. That concludes the public portion of our agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you.